We will not call the evening of the PPLD library initiative board of trustees to over at five oh two, please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, I'm ready to move to the agenda. Now just go on the presentation. We have the new library experience and the website surveys, Abby Warren.
There is going to be a slideshow as well. So whether they're going to take turns turning around their eye contact. We get through this. My name is Abby Warren. I'm the director of patron experience and accessibility. I'm here to talk to them about the 2025 library experience survey and I have my colleague Clint Hager, who is our website administrator, who will talk to you about the 2025 website survey. So to start off, the point of a library experience survey is to capture in the moment feedback from patrons, whether they're in our buildings, online, or using our app. You just kind of understand how they're using our resources. We've been doing this since 2019. Took a break in 2023 and 2024 where there was a larger community survey that fit into the facilities master plan process. The data you're going to see in this presentation that compares to the current survey is the need for 2022 though. Some facts about the survey, we ran it from March 28th to April 30th this year. We had 1,442 completed surveys, which is 200 more than the last time we did this survey, and 753 on paper. So we had a lot of stuff to enter in at the end of the survey. And we also had a available Spanish. The marketing must feature prominently in our April heat building newsletter. We had it on the homepage above the fold. So every time you came to the website, you saw it. And we also had a sticky button that kind of navigated with you throughout your website experience. So you could click on it anytime and give us your feedback. We also push it on all of our social media platforms. Good engagement across social media except for LinkedIn. No one clicked on a link in LinkedIn. So that must have been work for self-promotion, not for promoting our things. We also added an articulation platform like the catalog, the app, interlibrary loan, right? And of course, we printed stuff for it. We have print collateral at all locations and we had a sign that greeted people as they can. So it was a nine question survey, a mix of choose one, choose multiple, open-ended and some like fill-in blank. The first question was which library location did you visit today? And I know it's small on the screen, but all the solid bars are the current data. And then all the pattern bars are going to be in 2022 to follow along. 21C had big spike in survey responses in 2025. I saw same thing at Old College City and also on the mobiles. And a little bit of a dip in the East and then the app. Question two was why did you pick this specific location? The main responses are close to where they live or work, was easy to get to, convenient parking. A lot of people just liked the library they're going to, and that's why they picked that location. And then we gave people an opportunity to enter in other reasons why they picked that location. Top responses for the rock room enclosure, they were visiting with kids, or they needed to complete a task. We did run this survey through taxis. So a lot of people indicated they were there to do their taxes. Question three A. So if you picked a physical library, question one, we asked you, like, why were you there? What were you doing? The prominent thing was they're going to pick up a hold or check something out, or look at our books, brother collection, return something, or use computer for our wifi. That was across the board except for Old College City. And most people responded they were going to use the computer and use the wifi or the copier. So they were kind of the one out of library responses. And again, who could fill in the blank at other reasons why they're there? And rock room enclosure was mentioned. Visiting with kids and then people just really looking for a place to read, study, or work. Question three B. You got this question if you selected and you were on the app or the website. And there's a little weird nuance to this one. I'll spend a minute. The answers align pretty well to why they were at a physical location. So people were on our website or app to check out something or download something, check on a hole, browse the collection. Again, other responses, the rock room enclosure. It's convenient to use the website. You can use it anytime of day, save for the app. And then they were looking for other library information. So we did the survey through Survey Monkey and it has logic in it. So if you selected a physical location, you didn't see this question. Our paper surveys had no logic. So people filled out the entire survey whether they had to or not. So the survey or the information you're seeing on the screen is just from the people who were on the website or the mobile app, not the extra data of people who might have been in a building. Although we did capture that and included it as well. So I have nothing else to get out of fix that next year. For question four, this is our net promoter score, which if you're not familiar with those, that's a customer service metric that kind of ages loyalty and engagement with customers. We asked people to rate us from zero to 10, with zero being the lowest and 10 being the highest, how likely they are to recommend a library to someone. Really good scores and high scores for recommending. Eighty-two percent of folks would recommend us. However, our overall score did go down from 2022. And that could be related to we had more survey responses, some more data. And then a lot has happened since 2022 and some feelings may have shifted for the library from the back there. And then for question five, we asked them why did they give us a score? And the top categories were staff. People really love our staff. They love our customer service. They'll do what they feel when they come in and interact with us. So that was really something very prominent in responses. And then just other responses about overall satisfaction, maybe the atmosphere of the location, too loud, too quiet, that kind of stuff. Facilities and spaces, I think Penrose was having problems with their age back at this time. So there's a lot of comments about why is this so hot here? Can you fix that? And then people who love the side of 21C and people who don't love libraries as big. So it kind of all depends on what the user prefers. And of course, they love our programs and all the other resources that we have. And so question six is similar to question one, and I've got it compared up here. So in question one, we asked them why or what location they visited. And question six, we asked them which location they used the most. And so one thing to note on this is the blue line is the question six response. And then the supposed to be orange with white paragraphs. See that? That's the response from question one. So if you look at 21C, they've had a lot of people respond who might be visiting that location, but don't necessarily always frequent it. We had some big things going on in April, like Pike's Peak Mays, things like that. And then if you look at maybe the mobile libraries in Calhoun, those are flat. And, you know, to live in Calhoun, you probably frequent Calhoun library a lot. And that's probably the library visited when you fill out the survey. So. And then we moved on to some demographic data. We asked, is it about their age? Huge response from six about an older across the board, except for at library 21C, where more people respond who are 35 to 44. And I found when more people respond who are 25 to 34. So that was interesting. Then we asked about zip codes. And this is my first ever attempt at a heat map. So that's why it just looks hot everywhere. So if you think the color is right. But the darker the red, the higher concentrations of codes are presented in the survey. And you can't see it, but the top three zip codes I've entered were down, 80817, Northwest Falls Springs, 80919, and then 80920, where we are now. So those are the folks that could visit the survey the most. And then our final question was, do you want emails from us? Three hundred and forty of us said yes. So some of my initial opportunities or takeaways from this is that, well, we just did a rework for our, sorry, redesigned for our website. We kind of want to get feedback with from both on how that's working for them. And you'll learn about that in a second from Clint. We also had low engagement in our app. So we need to find a way to get some feedback from the app to make sure that's working for them and be different. There's a lot of people that come with kids, but I think we all kind of know that anecdotally that visit the library because of their kids. So we need to find ways to maybe engage them outside of that kid opportunity. So bring parents in without their kids or making sure they feel welcome when their kids are no longer library age. And then engagement with all communities in El Paso County. We had the survey in Spanish. Pretty good engagement for Spanish speakers to go around. So we need to work on that. Make sure we're getting their feedback. And then the survey is, the success of the survey is dependent on the locations. So maybe giving them more tools to increase participation at their libraries. About 21C had great participation, other locations didn't. So maybe we need to give them some other things to help them, get people to interact with that. And then the last part is just some suggestions that came through, some of the open-ended things. The bold gist is for your eyes, not them. Doesn't signify anything important. Just has a lot of text on that screen. So I thought I'd break it up a little bit. But they are ranged from simple things like making the catalog icon bigger with computers to fix this policy to make it work for me, or, you know, put some libraries in other places in town. So that's all I have to miss. I'm going to get over to Clint and have to talk about the website.
Awesome. Well, thank you for letting me present to y'all. I'm not sure if I stand over here or over here, but I might move this way. So my name is Clint Hager. I'm the website administrator. So I'm often in the backend working on the websites, helping everybody fulfill everything they do on the site. So in addition to Abby's user experience survey, we had a website survey. And this was just pertaining to feedback on our website. So the purpose of this was to gather in-depth website feedback to understand user experience. So we wanted to understand how patrons use our site, what are the most important things that they're looking for? Their age, what devices that they use to look at our site, things like that. Also to identify opportunities. So we wanted to find kind of points of the website where people struggled to navigate or use the site. So we wanted to find those things and create a smoother process for patrons to access our website. So we released the survey back in September 15th and went almost a month to October 11th. Five hundred and ninety-two people completed the survey. And we also had an option on the survey to do a in-person focus group at the end. So we did have a group of folks who were, who did that with us. All right. Sorry, it's really hard to see. So I'm going to just walk through the questions that we have, the nine questions. So the first one, why did you visit ppld.org? So the first, the most popular response, by the way, this was multiple choice. So they were there to check my account. The next one was browse the catalog. The third was to, there's a option where you can select other and you could select, you could write in your own response. And some of those responses were use a computer, use the printing services, search for jobs, checking, they wanted to find info on checking out materials and e-library resources. So, and some of the other ones down there are checkout or download an e-library items. For those of you who can't see that, and access a database. Let's move to the next one. Okay. So what devices are you using? So this was another multiple choice question where they could select some other option. And, you know, it's pretty clear cut that half of our users use a PC or laptop. And the other half use a phone or mobile device. We do have a very small sliver of folks who do use a tablet. And then there was a small group that did another response. And so the other responses were mostly Kindle, although one person said smart refrigerator, which I thought was really great. I have not checked our website. It's part of the territory. So I hope it looks, it looks okay. Okay. So question three, how often do you visit or use the website? So mostly everybody said multiple times a week, so about thirty-four percent. We had, the first time visitor was actually close to nine percent who submitted the survey. Whoops. Okay. So we're going to rapid fire through some questions now. So questions four through seven. So within a survey, they could, there was a slider where they could raise from zero to 10 what their experience was on the website. So website is easy to navigate. We got a seven point two. The information on the website is clear and relevant, seven point five. The design layout of the website is intuitive and user-friendly, seven point one. And then overall website experience, seven point eight. And I just want to note that we did have a lot of users who did either super, super high score. I think that's kind of our power users who love the library. We gave a really high score. And then we had the people who probably were frustrated with a certain item or, and just wanted to express their frustration and they gave that a zero. So there's a lot of on both sides of the spectrum. Okay. So question eight, what improvements or additional features would enhance your experience on the website? Okay. So this was an open-ended question. There was no multiple choice options. And the patrons could just go in there and fill out their responses. And so we got their responses and put them into buckets. So this is what you're seeing on the table. So the highest, I'm going to start from the lowest and work my way up. So the first one is good as is, no changes requested. So these were comments like, oh, the website looks great. I don't have, I have no feedback at all. So those were those types of questions. The next one is navigation. So we had folks who said something like, they were having issues going into the navigation, finding specific pages. We found a lot of responses had to do with either finding the catalog or the ILL page, like the interlibrary loan page. Another one was finding the printing resources. So that those were also things that they listed. So then we have catalog improvements. So these are folks who indicated that they had trouble finding, using their holds, finding, finding books within the catalog, struggling with the search feature within the catalog. So those types of responses. Next was the search feature. So we had a lot of people indicate that they, they thought the search feature was a little finicky. You would have to type in very specific responses to get what you want within the search box. So that was some feedback we got. I'll read you one quote of a participant who did put something about the search. It says, sometimes the search results aren't greater. For example, searching for database gives Colorado deaf history month as its first result. Explore all resources is the third result. So in that, in that quote, explore all databases should have been at the top. So I think people struggle a little bit with the search. Next is calendar and event improvements, then following account issues and renewing library cards. Okay. So the next question was question nine. We just simply asked what the user's age was. So we have a large indication that we have a sixty-five and plus audience who were using the website. The next group was thirty-five to forty-four at about like seventeen percent. And then the next is fifty-five and sixty-four, and that's about fifteen percent. I think the lowest is around under eighteen and we have less than like four percent that did the survey. Okay. So we also, in addition to this, our survey, we did in-person focus groups. We sat down with a smaller group of patrons. We had some scenarios for the website that we watched them go through and we took notes on how they interacted with the site. And I just quickly put some notes together for this slide of what we found in that focus group. So the most common resources that the focus group used was the catalog, room reservations, and events and happenings page. All participants were heavy library users. And they, we identified that people struggled a lot with the event calendar. They said that the event calendar was a little overwhelming. The search experience can be improved, like I mentioned before, the search can be a little finicky. The catalog needs to be featured more prominently. So we had some participants who said that they, they couldn't find the catalog in the header. So from all of this, from all the feedback we gathered, we put together some kind of like a to-do, a to-do list of everything that we can improve. This is not the full list, but here's just some quick tidbits. For the navigation, we want to make some key pages easier to locate, such as like the catalog, printing, the interlibrary loan page. The search function, so we would like to look at different search tools to make it easier for our patrons to navigate throughout the site, or something to include metadata. So if you search for a specific term that's not on the page, you can still find the page, the resource that you need easy. And then integrate more of the catalog within the website. So featuring the catalog more prominently in the header and include more widgets and tools from the catalog into our website. And then for the events calendar, we, we had a lot of feedback about, there's a pop-up on the event calendar that comes up when you, when you're trying to find an event. And I bet you most, most of you know what I'm talking about. We got a lot of feedback that we should remove that. We actually already did that. So that's great. And then have different views within the calendar. So you could search, because the, the main calendar can be overwhelming sometimes. So having different views can help with that. And then lastly, we identified a couple fixes that we need to do on mobile from some of the feedback we got. So we're going to be working on that as well. I think that's it. Do you all have any questions?
Actually, I was curious, what were the demographics of your focus group?
They were mostly, we had a split. So it was a pretty small group. We had about, we only had eight participants that did it. We had, I believe, two, we didn't ask their age within the focus group either. So, but if I were to guess, we'd probably, we had two young adults and then we had about four middle, middle-aged individuals and then the rest were seniors.
Hey, thanks for the presentation.
Yeah.
So the questions you had were people, what can be better? So there were some catalog accounts. Is the new L S going to help resolve some of those issues? Were they more related to the like visibility of those options or the functionality of them?
I think both. Yeah, absolutely. I think the, most of the issues addressed from our audience was, I think will be fixed within the new ILS. It's hard to say what, because the ILS is such a blanket fix, right? It's so many things that are going to be changing. We're, we are going to have to launch and see how, where the dust settles once that happens. But I think talking about the, the search, there was, there's a lot of, there's a lot of responses that had to do with how old the search looked within the catalog. Like I know that will be fixed within the new system. But yeah, I think there's going to be a lot of change. Once we change the new ILS, it should fix a lot of things.
Awesome. Thanks.
Anything else?
Any other questions from board?
Thank you.
Cool. Thank you, guys. Appreciate it.
We move on to the board reports. So start with me and Carol. There's many, I believe, sentences off.
Hi there. Just give me one second. I'm opening up the agenda so I can make sure that we cover, we had a lot of topics that we covered this month. Apologies, going back and forth between my phone and the agendas. Okay. Alrighty. So for the November meeting, we covered the strategic plan extension, the foundation board MOU, the resolution amending the 2025 budget, the transition policies, and that was a big packet or a big bundle of policies, which we just kind of looked at as a whole. And then we also looked at removal of policy guidelines policy. So I know we're going to look at some of those this evening.
Thank you. Hello, embarrassing to meet you. Nice to talk to you.
We had a sneak preview of the presentation tonight. So that was fun to see all of that data. We also talked about what was then the upcoming event at Ruth Holly and the now upcoming event at the Utes House Library to celebrate our purchase of those facilities and introduce our vision for those locations. And then we also celebrated the amount of food and donations the PPLD has collected for Care and Share. I mean, there, there was talk of the truck just having to keep being loaded up and and driven off. So the community has really stepped up. And PPLD did a good job, I think, and is doing a good job of being that collection point. So that's it.
Thank you. Everyone.
Hey, we talked about the upcoming officer positions and getting information on that, bylaws and JAP policies. After the CEO evaluation and of course tomorrow, I am understanding that the JAP will be having another meeting tomorrow morning.
Move on to trustee comments on the, on the event of the district or H M with other from having district. Anyone want to share?
Well, Angela and I attended the foundation board meeting yesterday. And there were foundation board members at the Ruth Holly celebration event. And so it was really nice to be able to share that and celebrate and thank them once again for allowing us to make that happen. And then several of us were able to be at the Ruth Holly celebration. And you could tell that the community was very excited about what all is going on there and the possibilities for the future. So I enjoy it.
I was going to be back on that and just say, yeah, I recorded Ruth Holly. Open, it was, it was a lot of fun, but it was really impactful what that did for the community. I had a couple of community members that came to me with very emotional about the fact that we were investing in their community and their lack of mobility and being able to get to other branches was what that actually meant for them and that community. And so it was really rewarding to be there and be able to be a part of that, have our foundation partners over there. It was a really enjoyable bit. I'm looking forward to tomorrow in the past.
I also went to Ruth Holly. What have you been looking forward to in the past tomorrow? And very, I think the Ruth Holly, I think it was just a wonderful day to partner with our community there. Just knowing that he's being a worthy present for that and to be part in that day was, was great. Also got to see some staff. Oh, I'm happy saying that was nice to connect with the staff and get to see some faces I haven't seen in months or even since I think last year. So that was a great experience as well to just reconnect with some of the folks who serve our patrons on the front lines every day. Okay. There are no other comments. And we'll move on to friends that have stayed by our registered before we do.
Good evening. Good evening. So last month I did share with you some of the preliminary numbers from the book sales. But today I have the official book sale number, which was seventeen thousand sixty-five dollars. So I mentioned last month that we broke a record. You know, that's bad when you keep breaking records because in a way you know that it's going to stop. So the big event that we had, which we sort of out of the blue decided, this was our seventieth year, seventy years of the Friends of Pike's Peak Library District. And we had a tea, a formal tea for our members. So if you're not a friend, you should join because you missed a great, great tea carding. Lots of fun. And it's surprising, you know, these are folks who joined because they want to be able to contribute so that they can give to the Pike's Peak Library District. But I think they were shocked that we were doing this, you know, like appreciating ourselves kind of thing. But we had lots of fun. Great catering job by a little place downtown called The Exchange. So people raised, it was traditional tea food. So cucumber sandwiches and, you know, everything was that. Scones with clotted cream and everything. And so, you know, you never lose an opportunity to get more money out of people. So we went, we actually going through thrift stores, goodwill, everything, found ninety-four we went, we actually going through thrift stores, goodwill, everything, found ninety-four sort of vintage teacups. And that's what we had at everybody's place. So, how did we get money? We said, for donation. If you found a teacup that you really love, you can take it home with you. And we also had teapots with flowers as center, as a centerpiece, and we said the same thing, for a donation, you may take the teapot with you. And we, we didn't get rid of all of the teacups. I have them, a lot of them still in my garage, but we, people donated and took all the teapots home and everything. So it was just, I think people just felt it was a wonderful time to sort of celebrate seventy years of giving to the Pike's Peak Library District because we do, we just love the library district. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, speaking Pike's Peak Library District, I'll make sure our work, most of me.
First of all, do you have any questions about what was in the papers? Need clarification, updates on that? Great, I like it. I'm gonna see if that easy. Uh, so we had our mailer, our year-end mailer, uh, hit mailboxes yesterday and the day before. Um, if you haven't seen it yet, you're on our list, and it's, it's on its way, and, and let me know if you don't get it. I will check into that and see what's going on, and if you're like me, you've got two of them, so I will also be checking in on that. Um, yesterday was the foundation's final board meeting for twenty twenty-five. Uh, it's kinda hard to believe, thirty, already the end of the year. Um, I do, on behalf of the, the count, the foundation board, want to thank Debbie for being a fantastic liaison this last couple of years. Um, we have been through a lot as a board and have been restructuring and have had so many parts moving, balls in the air. And Debbie has been just a wonderful liaison helping us, uh, get in line with what, what the district needs are, and so thank you for being, you know, a liaison in every sense of the word.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And I just wanna say again, thank you Debbie for, for holding that position. That was something you've done and you really helped mentor me this year. And if anyone else would love to step up on the board, um, there, she, she, she says she's leaving and she's leaving. So there will be an opening, so please think about that. Point, yeah.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Roger. Uh, so good evening, Warren, and we have any other to see. We just had a couple of points at the start of the financials. So we have property taxes, you can remember from prior months, we've had that, and we received those, those dollars. Uh, what came in in the last month was specifically those are chip taxes, so it's nice to see that that started. Uh, the second line I wanted to mention is the intergovernmental credits. We did have our first payment by the way, to enter about two and eighteen thousand, and we're not expecting that this year, we're expecting in January, February, October, so there's a little bit of variance for that. Um, and then we look at the expenses. There's the top three, you know, we have to talk about in our reporting benefits and salaries. We are currently at seventeen million eight twenty-five. I do anticipate that we are going to be running funding for the budget from the end of the year. Our second one is collection management materials. Means we're at three point nine million dollars. They have about seven hundred million eight thousand dollars left in their budget. I do anticipate seeing that go down by the end of the year as they are getting ready to purchase some budgetee materials to make sure that they have those available for patrons to check out. And then finally, our building and available means is at two million dollars. And we do anticipate seeing a little bit more as many months are hitting, we do anticipate seeing some more expenses. And the final point I wanted to mention is volume of capital. Um, you do see a large jump in the IT budget, and that is just from that purchase and buyout, so we have about that last week. Any questions? Thank you. Thank you very much. Move on to the public services, before Kenny says.
All right, good evening. So, as you know, I'll start out with our update on the integrative library system, the IRS. We have hit the ready set phase. So, we've been doing staff trainings, um, getting prepared, but as a reminder, um, we're gonna take the old system down at the end of the day on November twenty-ninth. And we'll be down for, um, almost two weeks. It'll come back up on December twelfth. We're gonna be closed for two days as the system transitions on the tenth. So that'll allow for staff to do book check-ins and, um, familiarize themselves with the new system before we open up on the twelve line with the new Polaris system. So, um, some of the things while we are down, uh, during that time, uh, patrons will not be able to pick up their calls. They, um, all of their due dates will be extended to December twelfth, so they don't have to return their materials right away. We won't be doing materials check-in, that's part of what we'll have to do in the new system, starting on the tenth. The mobile app will not be available. However, Libby and Overdrive and our new materials will be available, and as Tim said, during this time, we will be making a large purchase of more of those e-materials, so we have more of those available for patrons during this, during this downtime, so. The other thing that'll still be available will be computer reservations and room reservations. So, um, and I'd really like to thank Jenny and Colleen and Marissa, and then Melissa, who's one of our supervisors, who has really gone above and beyond and planned this out and worked really hard and gotten the training and communicating with staff. I'm hearing from branch staff that they're really excited for this, that it seems a lot easier for them to do. So we're really looking forward to that, that goal point on December twelfth. And then the other thing I wanted to point out too is we also hit a record for Overdrive, for Overdrive checkouts, um, earlier than we did last year, so we hit the three million mark on October fifth.
Wow.
But any questions on anything else to report?
Um, I just had a quick question on how are we communicating the dates, the times, the openings, the closings, the extended?
It's been on the website. If you open up the website, it's right there. It's part of that, you know, that ready, set, race car meeting. Um, patrons can click on a link and get the additional information about what they're going to get. Uh, we've been pushing out some of that communication and our other information, and there's signs up all over all of the library branches that this is going to take. Yes, communications is really. So, uh, yes, we have information that will be going out in our newsletters. Actually, I had ours done that. The webpage does have those dates on it as to when we're going to be down, but limited services that still be available, and then the dates of closure. And then about a week and a half out, we then really start pushing, we're closing. And if you will have, be down for two days, it'll be on our phones, it'll be everywhere, text messaging and everything, look at all that.
Okay, and then do we have any, like, maybe, uh, community service announcements?
Yes, they're beyond all the media, yes, the media will have it as well, they'll be pushing it out, and they've been even talking about it themselves. Thanks.
So, if we're not checking the materials in for two weeks and we have all of those materials that are available on a single day, whenever it gets back, as we push those lines out, are we expecting a delay in getting materials checked in, processed, or are we expecting problems with having an influx of unchecked materials, or?
No, our patrons are really conscientious about it, intend to return them when they believe that they are due and on time, and they're used to that three-week checkout, and so they can still return items during that time, it just won't reflect in the system that they've been returned and took. But our intention is on the tenth and the eleventh, that's gonna be a big, a big process, particularly at our, our location where we get large amounts of returns, like this location of these.
Any questions on support services, reports, communications, facilities, training and resources, grid technology, large strategy, invasion?
On set, thought the first snapshot was really, really. Much thanks.
We do like the anyway, it's just a big cheaper.
Well, it's not, I think, there was just a pack of the paper sprayed in my, the last year, that's like, I remember there was just so many information on here, the owner is a graphical, but the act, the information I got was all the rest, and that's I ended up doing, having that wrapped up, uh, the package, so later. That was all as, I said, you know, that's an idea, is they just grab the data from us, but.
Thank you, Jess. I'm looking to move on to the CEO report. That's for you, she's.
Good evening, everyone. Hello? Um, can you hear me?
We, we hear you, just a little muffled, Carol.
Okay, yeah, I don't know, uh, that's my IT department for everyone, if you can hear me well. Uh, is it any better, or I don't know what I can change here, that you can hear me better?
We can understand you are really quiet, always.
Um, so first of all, I want to take this opportunity and, uh, thank, um, council member Henjum and Line Weber for attending the Colley Library Celebration. And also I want to extend my personal apologies that I failed to recognize them there. I was so emotional and happy with the, with the purchase of the, of the library. So, uh, I don't know if they're in the audience, so I just wanted to make sure that, um, everybody would, to know that, uh, uh, I'm greatly appreciative of their attendance there. Uh, also, as part of my goals for twenty twenty-five is to, uh, provide, uh, data. And this month is Technology Services Snapshot, and even though I already said something about PPLD's IT department, I wanted to highlight that IT department is very small. We don't have a lot of staff there, but they do an amazing job, and as you see from the report, they receive about four hundred and thirty requests for technical assist, assistance from staff each month, and this report, the data you have there, uh, it's, uh, we analyzed data from October of last year, uh, through September of twenty twenty-five. Also, as you see from that, that, uh, our patrons use our services as printing services. Every patron gets seven dollars a week, uh, for them to, uh, to use, to print. Um, and, um, I know that it's one of the popular services that we provide. Also, we looked at public computer session, uh, sessions by location. Um, and, uh, I was not actually surprised, but when you look for, uh, per location, uh, twenty-one C and, um, East Library and Penrose, they are, uh, very busy when it comes to that. Uh, so, um, and, uh, but St. Craig Library, if you look at data, had the highest ratio of computer use to visitors. Averaging one computer session for every three patrons who came through our doors. So that's a, uh, actual overview of, uh, our technology services, uh, almost as kind of a year, um, from last year to, through, through September of twenty twenty-five. Um, also, I want to thank Abby and Clint for providing an amazing, uh, presentation. It was very informative to learn how our community use our services and, uh, surprisingly, I could hear them very well, but when some of the trustees were, uh, making comments, it was hard for me to hear, so. Um, again, thank you all for also allowing me, um, to attend this meeting virtually today. So, do you have any questions?
No questions, thank you so much. All right, any comments on? Okay, we go ahead and move to new business. Um, we do have three public comments on the saving journal, March on Monday, that's three. So the first one is from the maiden.
Good evening. I'm genuinely baffled by tonight's proposed bylaw revision. As someone who has studied and researched many Colorado's public library district bylaws, I can tell you that this revision stands out, and not in a good way. It is standard and fully supported by Colorado statute for bylaws to stipulate that board applicants must live in the service area and be at least eighteen years of age. Some library districts even require applicants to live in a particular city or region to ensure balanced representation. That makes sense. Equal representation across the service area has long been recognized as an important value. Tonight's proposal, however, goes much further. When the board suggests that no former PPLD employee applying to be a trustee can have any history of disciplinary action at the time of resignation or terminate, or termination, and that no individuals may currently or formally be engaged in legal action against PPLD, I have to ask, what exactly are you worried about? Because from the outside, it raises serious questions about viewpoint discrimination, and it raises questions about the First Amendment, specifically the right to petition the government. A revision like this essentially says, we don't want people who have disagreed with us. We don't want people who have questioned us, and we will disqualify you if you do. It also implies that this board is infallible and beyond report, reproach, which, let's be honest, no human body is. To me, this revision speaks to a fear of dissent. But isn't the entire purpose of a public board to welcome diverse experiences and viewpoints? Isn't robust discussion something we should value, not avoid? I'd like to remind you why the most recent lawsuit happened in the first place. Taxpayers had legitimate questions and concerns about hasty decisions to close a longstanding neighborhood library. They had concerns about the timing, the process, and the rationale. Many people wrote emails that went unanswered. Their concerns were dismissed. Community attempts to collaborate with money, expertise, and volunteers were ignored or scoffed at. Is that acceptable behavior from a public institution? Instead of tightening the circle to exclude those who raise concerns, this, the, this board should be asking a different question. How do we ensure that community members, especially those who disagree, feel heard, respected, and valued? And please start sharing your plans with Australian Mountain. We believe that we're getting closer to the Hunter Day, uh, clause, and I believe this community needs to be engaged. Thank you.
All right, the next, what comes in, Paco?
Two hundred and fifty years and nine days ago, the United States Marine Corps was born. Those who served take an oath to uphold the Constitution of the United States. Similarly, you take an oath to uphold the Colorado law and follow the bylaws of the Board of Trustees. And yet, here we are. This board is actively working to circumvent or even upend the Colorado library law and the constitution. Rewriting the bylaws to reduce transparency and dissent, while simultaneously reducing the participation requirements of board members in both the number of permissible absences and online attendance leads me to ask, why? Why did you choose to serve on a board when you don't want to make the time commitment to serve? Why don't you want input from community experts on ways to improve the library? Why don't you want representatives who are actively engaged in library usage to troubleshoot issues, to solve problems before they explode? You have denied even interviewing Harry Karsoplus, who is a foremost economist. You also have not interviewed Mike Farnett, an award-winning former CS, CFO of this library. If you're. If your concerns are financial, let's have some economists on this board. There is a benefit of dissent. It helps people to see the flaws and the blind spots. It opens their eyes to dimensions they may not have considered. Benjamin Frankly, who incidentally founded the public library system, said, "It is the first responsibility of every citizen to question authority." President Harry Estrman said, "Once a government is committed to the principle of silencing the voice of opposition, it has only one way to go, and that is down the path of increasingly repressive measures." Consider why you're here, consider the importance of libraries, and rethink this absurd revision of your bylaws.
All right, and the next one, Gideon By, this round's last, and Katie Zupas.
I don't think she'll be able to make it, she's in another event.
All right, so we'll move on to decision twenty five dash eleven dash one, Foundation Board Memorandum of Understanding. What we might not need to be considering?
Uh, I found out I was presenting this, uh, pretty short notice. I do believe, um, it was in your board packet, it's already had a chance to review it. Uh, and this MOU has kind of been hanging off as it is for two years now, uh, since before I came back to the district. Uh, I know we went to internal affairs and we answered some questions there. Are there any questions here today? I know Scott, we had some, uh, a little bit of pushback with our board around bylaws and everything, uh, and legal. But what we have decided to do is not change anything that was, um, in line with the way the bylaws of the foundation currently stand. And in twenty twenty six, we're gonna look at our bylaws. So we may come back to you with the revised and move you after that. But right now, um, this is the one that you've probably all seen for the last couple of years. Any questions? Thank you.
Um, we'll go ahead and call for the motion.
I move that we approve the bylaw to board, and I'll be used. Excellent.
One second.
Second.
Okay, any discussion? All right, if there is any discussion?
No, no, no.
Okay, so it's easy, pretty short. Okay, there's no discussion, we'll go ahead and call for the vote. All those in favor, please do if I say hi.
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 Any opposed? No, I said, no one's speaking. All right, decision twenty five, section one, dash, two, resolution for the twenty five, some more budget adjustments, can you comment? We can, yeah, and this is a second adjustment to include the purpose of your college in, uh, U. House Library, just for just to touch it. Any questions, Paul, in the game? All right, here again, and call for motion, and I do much in favor of the ball. That decision?
I move that we approve the, uh, decision twenty five, eleven, dash, two.
Do you have a second?
One second.
All right, end discussion. All right, I'll go ahead and call for the votes. All those in favor, please do if I say hi.
Hi. Hi.
Um, any others? All right, motion passes, we name this, so. I'm going to decision twenty five, dash, eleven, dash, three, bylaws section update. So I'll give an overview of that. Uh, as the, uh, process for board amendments is moving, uh, more in the joint funding of this jurisdiction in terms of, uh, not even jurisdiction, I shouldn't say absolutely. Uh, in, in their procedural, like, they're being more hands-on in that. It's in the thing, we put our hands off in terms of processing applications. Um, there's a suggestion that we just clarify some aspects of the bylaws. So this goes with governments as well as the main overview. Um, so that included just some of the things that we normally consider, uh, as well as clarifying, um, our role from the process versus the textual in the process. And you'll also see just, um, um, text changes as we have revisions of, um, Jack in some places, we just updated style a little bit, how places as well. Uh, and then in, so this is all in Article two, section one is the Jack specific things. And then section five, uh, was just clarifying some of the, um, measure three hours. Already taken over that, um, in reference to making recommendations to the Jack. Um, but this would just be in the bylaws, and this was under legal review, so all they did, um, say that was good access. We would want to, any questions?
Um, I have a, I have a comment, but it's a conversation I've had with a couple there, women related to these changes. And I believe this is unduly cycloned to the applicants that are coming in. Um, I would say, uh, at least a more tournament on employees saying within three years of leaving the district, that they may be eligible again if they leave their disciplinary action. Um, and I would also say, as far as the litigation goes, and I would say litigation, if it's previous litigation, I, I think that's overly urgent some and restrictive. And so both of the two things are maybe a bit three or more toward on uh, individuals who leave the district under disciplinary action, and then the one with any legal action.
Okay.
Yeah, I just want to point out that I actually agree with Erin and Ellen. I know, mark your calendars. Also, um, I know we, we don't usually respond to public comment, but because this is a change in the way things have been done, I do want to point out that the application process for board members, um, has been changed by the Joint Appointment Committee, and we don't even see them. We have no idea who has applied, and we don't conduct any interviews. So just so everybody understands that, that we are not involved in making that decision. Otherwise, I, I do agree that we don't want to be overly restrictive. And, uh, I, I would agree with Erin's suggestion.
Okay, and then we have our trustees on that?
Um, I have a couple of questions, just one. Um, so I have a number five, uh, first off, you did say that our wire, their public office, and they were perfectly fine with it.
Yes.
Okay, so the other question I have is, did the joint advisory committee take a look at this and provide any feedback?
I think it's based with, um, some members, I, I think Angela reached out as well. Um, I did not have any objections, but I don't know that we necessarily emailed the text. We just got it back from legal review, um, just before this went out, so.
Okay, so the only problem that I have is that we're not really involved in the process much anymore. Uh, we post the position online, um, we may update the, uh, job description. But as for who's qualified, it's already stated in the library law. And I feel like the added red sections that we did, um, I, I don't agree that we need to put those in there. Because again, the, the joint, uh, advisory committee is the one that looks at all the applicants and makes that decision. So I don't know why we would even put that in there, so say if you're um, if you were fired or were laid off because of disciplinary action or some other reason, then I don't understand why we as a board have that in there, knowing that we're not even going to see any of the applications, nor are we going to do any of the interviews at all. So.
Yeah, also under the library law, I'm surprised that we are able to, um, give grounds for removal of that kind of thing around, um, the conservative of our. So we do have that in terms of like some other aspects of it, um. So in terms of presence of Hassel County, is that included in the part that you think should be removed?
No, I mean, uh, it's the former employees of disciplinary action, all of that section there. I, I don't feel like we need to include that at all, because again, we are not the ones that leave the applications like we used to in the past, we're not the ones that make the recommendations. We can't even really do that anymore, it's all under the Jack's responsibility. So I don't understand why we have, they, they, they're the ones to make the decision and not us.
They, they follow grounds for, well, based on our own laws and other laws uh, for it to occur, like, or not, that's, I'm just explaining that the legal reason behind it. Um, I find if we want to make amendments to this, just kind of explain about.
In, in other words, there can be things that happen after appointment during, you know, where the Jack is not involved, and to have set explanations and understanding is the basic intent, I believe, in the library law.
Yeah, to some, some degree, the Jack was to our, provided some of those things. I also want to point out that, um, the library district is not all of El Paso County. Um, there are parts of El Paso County that are not part of the Pike's Peak Library District, what security and what field?
Yes.
So do we want to say El Paso County, or do we want to say Pike's Peak Library District Service Area?
New Service Area.
One of us.
I know, look at us, we're butts.
All right, so we've got a couple of suggestions on other sections, so maybe get to three years in current litigation, or, or if you now altogether, thoughts from residents?
I definitely agree with the residents of the Pike's Peak area, good catch, thank you, Carrie. Um, and then also, I think that the three years, because it, it is sort of a reasonable time to make sure that people are moving forward. And, um, does, you know, if something does happen, you know that.
Ms. Ben, any thoughts on this? Okay, um, we'll go ahead and examine, and it sounds like there's, I heard more so far, other than through the year change and then current litigation, so that would be my correct understanding, same findings?
Okay.
I just have a, I have a question. So is the three years, um, does that apply to former employees, period? Or former employees, former employees who were involved in disciplinary action at the time? Okay, they're, but part of the, okay, would not apply to other employees? Okay, thanks, I just wanted to clarify.
Okay. You have some, which is some changes.
Point of information? Does, I'm here just.
I'm sorry, I was, at this time, it, point of measures for the org, not for members of the audience, thank you, though.
I think Robert's rules would allow me to speak.
The board's rules and Robert's rules do not allow comments from the audience, thank you.
All right, if this works. So the initial section, we're changing, who are residents of El Paso County? Who's who resides within the U. County Service Area? And then the next sentence, I believe, would read, "Individuals currently engaged in legal action against PPLD or illegal activities on PPLD property, and former employees within three years of separation under disciplinary action by PPLD as a term of resignation or termination of employment shall be held in search of.
I'll try to. Okay. Then can I get a motion to, um, on the minute?
Or we're going to just get some moved?
Um, I move that we adopt the bylaw changes as amended.
And I will second.
All right, any further discussion? Okay, we'll go ahead and then call for the vote, all those in favor, please do if I say hi.
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 Any votes?
No.
All right, that's had, we will, um, I do want to.
I would like to amend the agenda to move item nine, public comment, up for the executive session.
Second.
All those in favor, she can, I say that.
Hi.
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 Sorry, I keep talking over here. Uh, okay, we don't have any public comment, uh, since we do have quite a few. So if you're mind, if you heard, start that, so thank you.
Well, go ahead, since we've got, um, I think fourteen more folks that signed up. I'll announce you three at a time, just to save us some time. There will be a three-minute timer on the screen that'll start, uh, once you get going. Our first three speakers are Anita Stuckey, um, Jeff Thorne, and Athena Collins. If you could approach the mic, uh, Anita, you're first.
Thank you so much for allowing me to speak tonight. And I guess, unlike anybody who comes to the library, I'm seeking information. You only recently learned that our library on, uh, South Eight Street, oh, I'm now to the.
Yeah, the previous speakers were too altitude. I'll restart your time.
Okay. So again, I've, I've come in here to seek information. We, uh, represented a group of people around South Eight Street, Cheyenne Mountain Libraries. And we just recently learned that the lease is about to expire, and we are advocating to keep it in that location. It is vital to that location. We're so fortunate to have a lot of residential area, a lot of compartment dwellers, people who need this legal information, but they can get there in all public information. So I guess what I would like to learn is, how can I effectively advocate for this location to remain? We suggested this. I'm a, I'm a recent newcomer, I moved back to Colorado Springs about a year ago. Love this Pike's Peak Library District, love the location, I could walk right over, it is so helpful. I used to be a grant manager, and I relied on the public library system to help get legal information out to help on, uh, folks who can be a problem services. It's also vital that we have something accessible. We have so many people walking in our community, so we need to keep that there. The Broadmore is adjacent, truly. Now, a lot of us don't live in the Broadmore, and we want our low-income folks represented and having easy access. Anything I can do to be of service in facilitating either the purchase of this or to extend the lease, you'd love to know what's going on. Thank you so much for your time and consideration, Laura.
Thank you so much, if I may, something?
Well, let me, uh, like the previous speaker, um, I'm, my name is Jeff Thorne, and, and we moved to, uh, the uh, Cheyenne Mountain area, uh, about a year and a half ago. And because, so, you know, it's far from here, but it's central to that area and quite convenient, uh, as a matter of fact, I had my library card before I had my driver's license and registered, voter's registration, that sort of thing, taken care of, uh, because of that. Um, so, be, you know, because we're far away from Cheyenne Mountain, and because of the hours your, your board meetings are held, I would, you can take my comments as maybe representing those, those hundreds of others of patrons who may not be aware there may be a threat to having it closed, or who may, you know, be unable to come up and speak today. Um, I find that, you know, it's a small branch with, but it's got great resources to communicate, and it's used by a great number and variety of people, uh, in that area. So I would implore you to keep it open, thank you.
Okay, sir. So. Sir, please quickly get your zip code. We just do request names.
My incident, I had that here, and I apologize. That was my fault for not saying that. In the future, I've got it here.
Oh, okay.
And in the future, yeah, when you come up, if you could say your name and your zip code, that was an oversight on my, I apologize.
No worries. Thanks. Thank you.
Um, Athena, are you here?
Hey, I would like to thank the PPLD for allowing me, giving me a chance to speak and for their continued efforts for literacy, creative spaces, job workshops, and even more. My name is Athena Collins. My zip code is eight oh nine one six. Um, and I am here to advocate for an opening for a library on East Powers. So uh, to kind of give you a background of what I do, so I am in direct support care uh, for adults with intellectual and developmental disabilities. Um, and we go to the twenty one C Library a lot. Um, it, here it promotes independence, growth, and education. Um, and there's a bunch of excellent resources. Um, I have an individual who has cerebral palsy and he doesn't have much hand dexterity, but he loves learning how to type. And through him learning how to type helps him with his vocabulary along with his hand dexterity. He just loves it. Um, and why would we want a library on these powers? It's a very busy area and it provides more opportunities for people in that area to, um, not only for students, um, parents, kids, um, along with those who do have disabilities to um, have a space where they can grow and they can promote independence. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next three are Frozy or Frozy Abbott, Mary Stronger Price, and Max Cronstadt. Um, again, please say your name and your your zip code be- before you speak, and then I'll start the timer. And try to get as close to the mic as you can, especially if you've got a softer voice. Frozy?
Yes.
Am I saying that right?
Yes.
Great.
Say name and zip code?
Name and use it.
Okay, I am Frozy Abbott. My zip code is eight oh nine oh three. Excuse me. My name is Frozy Abbott. I'm a leader with the Mill Street Community Benefits All Coalition, and I have lived in Mill Street for more than twenty-three years. A group of us are here today to speak to you about our neighborhood and our recent conversation with Norwood Development, who will be presenting a proposal for urban renewal financing from the PPLD Board at some point in the next couple of months. Mill Street is Colorado Springs, oldest working class neighborhood, originally home to workers at the Broadmore Hotel, servants to estates in the Old North End, and neighbors at the nearby mill. And it continues to house many of the city's essential workers to this day. Mill Street neighbors teach our city kids, treat our patients, bag our groceries, serve our coffee, and take care of our elders. Neighbors. Excuse me, neighbors in Mill Street look out for one another, share plants and garden tips, help raise each other's kids, walk each other's dog, take care of each other when we're sick, hurt, and growing old. It's friendly, diverse, working class neighborhood, and we like it that way. My home in Mill Street is more than a home. It's the headquarters of my social network and community life. I've gotten to know my neighbors well, and we look out for each other and can call on each other in times of need. Many of us have lived in the neighborhood for a long time, and many of our deepest relationships are with our neighbors. A couple of years ago, I felt called to take. I'm sorry, I uh, a couple of years ago, I felt a calling to take on a bigger role supporting my neighbors and began a weekly food pantry for those in need. The pantry became not only an important source of food for my neighbors, but also a social event, a time for people to gather and enjoy each other's company. I started organizing with my neighbors and I and our coalition partners in twenty twenty-one, because I saw things changing quickly in our neighborhood. And it didn't seem like as neighbors, we had a seat at the table where the decisions were being made. Many of my neighbors fear being priced or pushed out, and I can't stand for that. And if I lose my home or my neighbors, I don't know what I will do or how I will survive. That's why we need a real partnership with Norwood that creates real solutions for our neighbors. And if no one else takes care of us, we have to look out for ourselves, and that's what we're doing, and I hope you can appreciate that. Thank you. I'm Frozy Abbott, eight oh nine oh three.
Mary. And Max, you'll be up after Mary, so you want to get closer to the mic.
Thanks, I'm short. Hi, I'm Mary Springer Phrase, and I used to have the privilege of teaching ESL with the library. And I like the library very much. It's one of the democratic institutions we have in this uh, country. Open to everyone. Um, so my name is Mary Springer Phrase and eight oh nine oh three is my zip code because all of us with blue t-shirts are from Mill Street Neighborhood. And then, um, that's our t-shirt. Uh, I'm with the Mill Street Neighborhood Benefits All Coalition. And we have lived in Mill Street for twenty-four years. I I love living there. Um, my neighbors are friendly, they're welcoming people, we help each other out. And whether you have a little money or a lot of money, you're very welcome there. Um, today, the Mill Street that we know is at risk. Historically, it's been an affordable, working class neighborhood, but prices in the neighborhood are ra- rising rapidly because of the upscale development along our borders. Um, that they're also taking over south downtown. In the twenty twenty-two survey of over seventy Mill Street people, fifty-eight percent said that they were concerned about being displaced, and pressure has only increased since then. Um, after decades of public disinvestment, Mill Street is now being gentrified by rapid reinvestment. Um, we've got taxpayer-supported soccer station, soc- soccer stadium, upscale apartments, and luxury hotels. Uh, which we're planning to develop one. Some Mill Street neighbors have already been pushed out, primarily because long-term renters who had hoped to buy their homes one day, but they couldn't afford it after the value practically doubled in a few years. Um, Mill Street neighbors are disproportionately renters, elders, people living with disabilities, or living below the poverty line, making us particularly vulnerable to displacement. So our median income is quite a bit lower than that of the rest of the city. I've lived through displacement of an entire neighborhood before. From nineteen eighty-one until two thousand one, I lived in the Lowell Neighborhood. Um, and that was a thriving, working class neighborhood in south downtown. Um, we gave away the police station in Isla de la Grande. That used to be a junior high school. Um, my husband and I ran a bike library for the neighborhood of kids, and every Sunday we'd all play softball at the neighborhood little school. But our neighborhood is declared an urban renewal zone. Neighbors were intimidated into calling, selling, or moving out, and the neighborhood is bulldozed, all of it. Um, replaced some high-end townhomes. Today, you have no clue what kind of a neighborhood we have. There's black, brown, white, and lots of children. Um, I have lost track of most of the people I knew there. We were not given any help in contacting or connecting with them. And the social and the community bonds are gone forever. I keep hoping the Pioneer Museum will do these. I don't want to live through that again, and I know we don't need to, if we can partner with a developer, um, who is the author and the student. Thank you, Mary.
Hi, uh, my name is Max Bronstep. I'm a leader with the Mill Street Community Benefits All Coalition and president of the Mill Street Neighborhood Association. I live in the eight oh nine oh three neighborhood. Um, I've lived in Mill Street for just over three years. Uh, I moved into the Mill Street neighborhood because I wanted to get more involved with a group of neighbors uh, who are organizing to protect and advocate for the neighborhood. Um, but I've stayed because of the strong intergenerational community that I've been welcomed into that's been hard to find elsewhere. Um, I know that most people change, and in many ways, I am part of that change. Uh, but change doesn't need to mean that people are pushed out or that the neighborhood loses what makes it special. Um, that's why we've organized to try to work alongside developers to ensure what's built in our neighborhood comes with meaningful benefits for current residents. Um, we reached out to Norwood in the spring to discuss negotiating an agreement to benefit the neighborhood. In recognition of the impact, the luxury catbird hotel will have prices and displacement pressure in the neighborhood. Norwood, Norwood told us they weren't interested in negotiating, negotiating an agreement, but would discuss a partnership with us to try to achieve our goals. Um, we were open to that, and we started meeting with them regularly to discuss what that could look like. We proposed that through this partnership, Norwood helped the neighborhood acquire land and or housing to preserve or build housing through the Elevation Community Land Trust, a land trust in Denver that specializes in creating long-term affordable homeownership opportunities. As part of these, as part of these discussions, they ended up including land in Mill Street on the south side of Reno in the URA proposal that will be before you come to us, in the hopes that it could be used as part of this partnership with the Elevation Community Land Trust. These conversations moved forward productively for a while, but unfortunately, communication has broken down recently. We had, per Norwood's request, presented a set of comprehensive goals for the partnership at a meeting with them on September thirtieth. They told us they'd get back to us with feedback on it by October tenth, ahead of a meeting on October twenty-fourth. When we hadn't heard from them by October twenty-second, we reached out and spoke to them. Agreed to postpone our meeting on the twenty-fourth with the understanding that they'd use that time to work on getting us feedback and a new proposed meeting date. We did hear from Norwood on October twenty-fourth, and we haven't heard from them in nearly a month that's passed since, which is why we're here with you all today.
Our next three speakers are Mary Quinn, Catherine Dwayne, and Savannah McDaniel. And as a reminder, say your name and zip code at the top and stay close to the mic. Thank you.
Yes, uh, I'm Mary Quinn. I live in eight oh nine, excuse me, eight oh nine oh three. I'm also a leader with the Mill Street Community Benefits All Coalition, and I've been in Mill Street for forty-seven years. I raised my kids in Mill Street and felt safe letting them roam free because I knew my neighbors were looking out for them. Of the five homes on my side of the street in the same block, three have been in the same family longer than mine. We go back a long way. Mill Street isn't fancy, and we like it that way. We live in historic homes that are colorful, small, and close together. A neighborhood like ours is hard to find these days. I started organizing with my neighbors because I saw shiny new upscale development moving in as some of my neighbors forced to move out. In the time I've lived here, I've seen neighborhoods around us wiped out from Cana House to Lowell to parts of Mill Street that were eaten up by the Drake Power Plant, and I refuse to let it happen again. As a neighborhood team representing the broader neighborhood-led coalition you see today, we believe we have engaged with Norwood in partnership conversations in good faith. We tabled the idea of a formal agreement after our first meeting. We offer conditional support to their catbird URA proposal despite our neighborhood's troubled history with urban renewal as a tool, but we can't continue to do so if we can't trust Norwood to follow through on the commitments they make. We're asking that the Pike's Peak Library District Board delay a future vote on the Catbird URA proposal until Norwood reenters good faith partnership conversations with the Mill Street Neighborhood. We are not opposed to new development, and we believe that we can work together to create a model for how neighborhoods and developers can partner for community benefit. Knowing if we have a willing developer partner. Thank you.
Good evening. Uh, my name is Catherine Duarte, zip nine, eight oh nine oh nine. I'm an ally and member of the Mill Street Community Benefits All Coalition and senior vice president of housing development at Charities of Central Colorado. Also, seeing it to this conversation, I was also the project manager and co-author when I was at the city of the Mill Street Neighborhood Plan, when it was approved unanimously by the Downtown Review Board, the Planning Commission, and City Council back in twenty nineteen. I'm not going to spend any time going over what's in the plan, but I highly encourage you all to take a look at it and see what's in it and to understand the neighborhood's vision. Why that's relevant to today, to today's discussion is that many people in this group in front of you have been deeply involved in Mill Street for years. Many of them helped craft and approve the neighborhood plan, and they're not a reactive bunch. They're proactive, collaborative, and just want fair public policies. They work tirelessly to make sure that Mill Street stays a place where people can afford to live. That does not mean opposing any development that comes along. It means expecting developers and local officials like yourselves to ensure that public funds and public resources benefit residents, do not threaten anyone's ability to stay stably housed. Upon learning about Catbirds URA bid, this group approached Norwood to meet as fellow downtown neighbors. We did uh, do not feel that a luxury hotel is an appropriate use of public financing in a neighborhood where the biggest concern is displacement and the biggest uh, the most urgent need is affordable housing. So we shared our concerns respectfully and requested a community benefits agreement, a tool commonly used around the country and in Colorado, to match development efforts with local needs. We believe that Norwood should be on the hook to provide meaningful benefits to our neighborhood uh, because they're asking to divert taxpayer dollars to build a luxury hotel that will increase neighborhood, neighbors' property taxes, threatening not only current residents' ability to stay um, their current ability uh, to stay stably housed, but also future working class families ability to live downtown, close to jobs and other opportunities. We believe that this public money should come with real public benefit. Norwood's initial engagement with us and our ideas gave us a sense of hope and optimism, and we're not sure why they stopped all communication with us with no explanation. However, we'd like this body to know that we're still committed. We're committed to ensuring that public financing goes to developers that can keep their word to taxpayers and to projects that do not accelerate the displacement of working class residents. Taxing from financing is a necessary and powerful tool to build a thriving city. The city and county are about to release their housing needs assessment, which will show that we have a housing shortage numbering in the tens of thousands of units. Public financing tools should go towards projects that meet our housing needs and reflect the communities that are built in. Quite simply, public financing should be used with public input. We ask that you refrain from voting uh, for this URA project until Norwood makes good on its commitment to neighborhood partnership, preventing displacement and providing capital A affordable housing.
My name is Savannah McDaniel. I live in Navl, eight zero nine zero nine. I'm a member of the Union Printer Home Community Benefits Agreement Coalition. I'm here to support the Mill Street Community Benefits All Coalition as urban renewal acutely impacts other neighbor, other downtown neighborhoods, like my own, and all taxpayers across the city. Unfortunately, Norwood has not met previously agreed upon deadlines for their partnership with the Mill Street Coalition. For this reason, we are asking that you delay a vote on Norwood's application for urban renewal until they come back to the table. Urban renewal has offered developers across our city the opportunity to transfer public funds and deprive the profit. However, this history of urban renewal does not have to limit our city's financial future. Developers using public funding have the fiscal responsibility of working hand in hand with the communities that they are building in. For the public funding and tax breaks that are offered to multimillion dollar developments as part of urban renewal, we, the residents of neighborhoods impacted and the taxpayers of the city are demanding more from developers than empty promises. For public funding, we are demanding that developers deliver public benefits. Until Norwood negotiates in good faith with the Mill Street Coalition, we ask that you delay a vote on Norwood's application for urban renewal. It is incredibly inappropriate for Norwood, a private entity, to have access to public funding without providing community-guided public benefits. I sincerely appreciate your time and consideration on this issue. Thank you.
Our next three uh, speakers are Belinda Gardner, Susan, and I apologize, I can't read it, Balduck or Balden perhaps, Susan B., and Katie Miller is the third speaker of this group.
Hello, good evening, everyone. Um, my name is Belinda Gardner. My zip is eight oh nine one oh. And um, I am the vice president of the Cayman Neighborhood Association, and I am on the uh, Mill Street CBA Coalition as well. I um, grew up in Mill Street as a very young girl. So that is my connection to the, to the Mill Street area. I um, and now I live in Cayman, Cayman Neighborhood, which is just. and now I live in K-Lan, K-Lan neighborhood, which is just east of Memorial Park. In K-Lan, we are facing many of the same issues as the Mill Street. We did a new development east of downtown and proposed new development at Union Printers Home, having done putting pressure on the neighborhood, causing residents to fear of being displaced. K-Lan supports Mill Street because we know that as a community, we need to come together, and we need to find solutions and address displacement before it's too late. Thank you.
Hello, Susan Baldine from Colorado's First Faith Table, and my zip code is eight oh nine one eight. We're a multi-faith group, and we work on issues of human dignity, such as affordable housing and homelessness. All of our faith traditions call for us to care for our neighbors, but especially those that are the most vulnerable. We're all aware that there's a housing crisis and rising homelessness in our city. One-third of homeowners and fifty-three percent of renters are cost-burned. And this is a pipeline to homelessness. We need to build more affordable housing. We hear that all the time. But we don't always hear that every year there's a loss of affordable housing due to gentrification and redevelopment. Preservation of existing affordable housing is a worthy and important goal. When an upscale development like this hotel is near an established affordable housing neighborhood, it displaces people. And the problem we have in our city today is that they have nowhere else to go because the housing is not available. Economic development is a good thing for our city. We want economic development. But it also causes harm when it destabilizes neighborhoods and displaces people. And we need developers to not just do business as usual, but to be part of the solution. There are mitigation strategies to preserve affordable housing, and developers need to be a voice in this. We need them to be part of the solution because they've caused some of the harm, even if it's unintentional. I urge you to postpone the funding for this project until Norwood can come to the table and be part of the solution. Thank you.
Hello, my name's Katie. I've been a resident of the Mill Street neighborhood for over three years now, so I'm in the eight oh nine oh three zip code. I've been involved in the Mill Street Neighborhood Association for over a year. And as you've heard from our neighbors and allies, I too am very passionate about the Mill Street neighborhood. I recognized unique and welcoming neighborhood and community almost immediately as I come from a long line of working-class people, and I feel very at home. My neighbor's here. We just want to thank you guys, the board, for taking the time to hear what our neighbor has to say. We hope you'll see that we're reasonable, and we just want what's best for our neighbors. We know that the neighborhood will grow and change over time, and we're not opposed to that. We just want agency over how that happens so we can ensure it benefits not just the new folks living in our neighborhood, but the people there now, whether they've been there a few months, a few years, a few generations. We'd be happy to answer any questions the board may have about anything we've shared tonight, and look forward to hearing your deliberation on our reports. Thank you.
And our final two sign-ups are Fred Johnson and Carla Powers.
Hi, I'm Craig Johnson. I'm from eight oh nine one nine, which is familiar to many of you. I'm noting tonight that it's been about fifteen months since we were suddenly notified that our library would close, and it's been about a year since it was that. At this point last year, the library had a four-point-seven-five increase in head gout through the door. At this point this year, they've got a ten-point-two-six reduction. I wonder where some of those citizens might have resigned, if you had a library they can go to, and now do not. So let's talk about how we make decisions about facilities going forward. If somebody's master plan said you guys were going to put together a little bit of some deposits, would actually guide analysis and decision-making around facilities. You continue to operate without that. You continue to make decisions arbitrarily with no explanation of the lies, the wherefore's, or what priorities and what objectives you have. It's been embarrassing to watch it happen. So I suggest you go out into our community with lots of engineers, lots of analysts, lots of people who understand how to do surveys and understand what the population wants. And let's figure out what the best way to construct this bloody library system is. If you want to close libraries, fine. Let's do it based on some set of criteria. If you want to open libraries, fine, base it on criteria. But let's get some data and analysis so that we in the public can understand what the hell you were doing. Thank you.
Someone left a paper here?
I'm grabbing a paper.
Okay.
Thanks.
Okay, you guys know how I use my computers. We'll do our best here. Okay. I'm Carla Powers, eight oh nine one nine. After listening to the public affairs meeting earlier this month, we had questions and core the PPLD survey that was presented both at that meeting and now to you. Google told me that PPLD has three hundred and one thousand active library cards. With fourteen hundred and forty surveys received, sadly, this means that fewer than point five percent of our patrons completed the survey. That's zero point five percent response size. It's not meaningful and risks being misleading. I know that you feel that you did everything to get the word out. Personally, I must be blind because I didn't see it on the website either. But I know of one other thing that you can find next time. Use the email to the patrons, like you did on April 25th, when you sent out the email about Rockman Library and toddler time. Pretty much everyone I ran into received that or knew about that information. Those emails were read. I don't feel that I'm getting too many emails from PPLD, and I read them. So please try this next time. Speaking of that email insisting that we no longer use the name Rockman Independent Library, we see that you are referring to Reading at the Rock Library by Rockman Independent Library at the bottom of your website. And we've been trying to be very accommodating and have been trying not to use that name that clearly describes the goal of our library. Since you are using Rockman Independent Library to refer to our tiny independent library, we'll also use it as a subtitle or an explanatory phrase to go along with Reading at the Rock Library, which is our name, Reading at the Rock Library. So people understand that it is one and the same library. I think that'll help everyone. Back to the survey, I'd like to put attention to the first question on the survey. Why did you use this location today? Twenty-eight percent of those who wrote out an optional answer expressed frustration with the closing of Rockman Library. That's almost a third of the people who filled out that link. Perhaps unraveling this frustration needs to be added to the additional suggested opportunities list rather than ignoring it. It isn't just going away. It has been almost a year since Rockman Library has closed. Our community has stepped in when we can, and Reed and Rock Library continues to grow with materials now moving into an online library system platform. But our efforts are not a replacement for a full PPLD library with professional staff and evening hours. Buildings are available in our area. Please work with us to find a home for a new Rockman Library. Oh. I have, I have the, if anyone would like to see, actually read the notes. So do I start here and just, there's really good notes in there. This is the survey, and it actually has everyone's comments. And I've highlighted all the ones that have to do with Rockman, and I circled all the ones that have to do with the email. Thank you, Miss Sasha. All right. Last, I am, I'm, I'm, I think we all have used these, uh, uh, so we do some of our exciting moments of businesses, his dedication, so to speak, he said. Okay, uh, it is now time to move into the second session. We can't get them motion to that.
A second.
I was just thinking, thinking about the same thing.
All right.
Right. Any votes? I don't know. It's not, it's not, it's actually, it's actually discussed, which I don't have. We all voted, this, this actually, so. I vote that we return to regular staff.
So.
All fair.
All right.
Okay, I'll post one now. All right. And the last, I don't know, I mean, there's sort of, yes. Please, decision item twenty-five, which is CDR, begin.
I'm moving to postpone that item until the consent period would be second.
All right, all those okay?
All right.
Any votes? All right. Then I'll go in the end. There's no real business. The objection that you're seven twenty.